Hi Rick. Rick? Able to talk? Okay. So Ned, we're having, still having issues, so do you want to start the meeting?
Yeah, I can do that.
Get you to start the meeting?
Alright. Like to call the meeting of the zoning board of appeals of Watertown, Connecticut, meeting to order at 7:17 on 6/24/2020. Roll call. Rick Serandria. Phil Roger. Ned Dalton here. Vincent Giannetto.
Here.
Roger Mitchell. Gary Swingle.
Here.
Jeff Franson.
Here.
Marie Genovese.
Here.
Okay, so we'll, uh...
So you have three alternates.
See, right.
Three alternates.
See Gary for Rick. Jeff for Phil. And Marie for Roger.
Before, before we go too far, just so you know, I have to recuse myself from the first applicant. Because I have a business relationship with the company he works for.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it's someone else.
Do you want me to read the notice?
So. You want to read the web-based operating procedures into them?
I'll read it. This is an audio...
Okay.
This is an audio-based virtual meeting, so we're operating under the following procedures. This session is being recorded, both video and audio. Mark Masood, the land use administrator, and Michael Simmons, the town's IT director, will be the meeting administrators. A link to the video slash audio will be posted to the town's website. Most individual, most people attending this meeting will be muted. The commissioners and staff will not be muted. Individuals will be unmuted at the time they are recognized to ask a question or make a presentation. Presentations may be made by applicants and their agents when appropriate and permitted by the commission. Other attendees will be permitted to speak only during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Commissioners and staff will generally be keep, keeping video of themselves on throughout the meeting unless they are attending via telephone only. Applicants and members of the public should feel free to leave their video on or off. However, they will be asked to turn on their video when speaking. The picture tells a thousand words and can be useful in conveying your meaning. If video is not available for you, you will not be precluded from speaking or providing public testimony. During public hearings, individuals desiring to speak will be asked to state their name and give their home address. We will read the public hearing rules at the start of the first public hearing of the meeting. Please use the chat feature or the raise your hand feature for the meeting administrators to know that you've raised your hand to speak. If an applicant or agent needs to submit additional documents to the commission which were not distributed in advance of the meeting with the rest of the materials, the applicant will, the application will be continued to the next meeting so the new documents could be made available to the public. Members of the public may only speak during a public hearing. If a member or the public speaks outside of a public hearing or creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the meeting administrators or the chair. Okay. So, want to read the, should we read the notices? The ground rules, okay.
Ground rules. Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing Ground Rules. Number one, the applicant or his representative will make his formal presentation to the board stating his specific hardship and precisely why this merits a variance from the zoning regulations of the town of Watertown. Two, all comments, discussions, and observations shall be made through the chair after proper recognition by the chairman. This is necessary to ensure that only one person at a time speaks on any issue, thus making it easier for everyone to understand and for clear legal transcription. Three, all persons addressing the commission shall begin by first clearly stating their name, address for the record. If necessary, the person may be asked to spell his or her name for the record. Four, the following present, following the presentation of the application, the zoning board of appeals will ask specific questions of the applicant. Five, after the board has asked its questions of the applicant, I shall then allow members of the public who wish to speak either in favor of this application or against it to address the board. Six, I shall then allow the applicant to respond to comments of the members of the general public. Seven, I shall then allow any members of the general public who wish to present any additional information or clarifying discussion to do so. Eight, I shall then provide an opportunity for the applicant to respond to these additional remarks if he or his representative so wishes. Nine, the zoning board of appeals has 35 days from the date the public hearing commences to complete the public hearing. The board may ask the applicant for a 35-day extension of the public hearing period if the board requires any additional information or wishes to schedule a site walk to observe the situation for themselves. Ten, the zoning board of appeals has 65 days from the date when the public hearing is closed to render its decision. The board may or may not make its decision tonight at its regular meeting following the public hearing. You may stay for the regular meeting if you wish, or you may leave at the end of the meet, public hearing and contact the zoning office the following morning to determine the status of your application. So, the first application is application 2020-2 of Allen Hayes for a variance of 15 feet from a front property line setback for construction of a new single-family dwelling to be located 35 feet from front property line, street line, at 603 Osage Drive, Watertown, in an R30 residential zoning district.
Mr. Chairman, there is a typo here that shouldn't be 603 Osage Drive. It should be Lot 4, Litchfield Road, and an R90 zone. Sorry about that.
Yeah. Lot 4, what?
Litchfield Road.
Lot 4, Litchfield, okay.
Watertown, Connecticut, and an R90 zoning district.
Okay, okay. Anyone here to represent?
Do you want to read the legal notice?
I don't have the legal notice. Does someone have that?
I haven't. I can read it.
Okay.
Town of Watertown Zoning Board of Appeals Legal Notice. The zoning board of appeals of the town of Watertown, Connecticut, will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 2, this was actually on May 27. Yes, but now it is June 24, 2020, at 7:00 PM as a web-based meeting to hear and act upon the following applications. Application number 2020-2 of Allen Hayes for a variance of 15 feet to front yard property line setback for construction of a new single-family dwelling to be located 35 feet from front property line or a street line of Morris Town Line Highway on a parcel of land, AKA tax map number 4, Block 1, Parcel 4, Litchfield Road, parentheses, Route 63, Watertown, Connecticut, and an R90 residential zoning district. Section 12.8 of the Watertown zoning regulations requires minimum 50 feet setback from front property line for a principal building in an R90 residential zoning district. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. A copy of the application is on file in the planning and zoning office, Watertown Municipal Center, 61 Ecolake Road, Watertown, Connecticut. Dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this 14th day of May 2020. Dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this 21st day of May 2020. Edwin Dalton, Secretary of Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, I just got a call from Rick. He said he was there, but he was muted.
I'm not muted now.
Okay. Also, uh, you need to sit somebody. You need to sit somebody for me because I have to recuse myself?
We have, we have no one left.
And get it on his property in a decent shape and manner. Like I say, it's an older parcel of land that we're trying to make conform to the newer zoning regulations, and it's a little tough when you have two or three sides already facing a street. So that's kind of a hardship in a nutshell there, but I'll have it in a presentation board up.
It's also close to wetlands, correct?
Right. Yes, in the back there are some wetlands, correct?
So, so this, this actually moves the house away from the wetlands, is that correct, Gary?
Yes, that will help us, yes, get away from the wetlands.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
Sure.
Mr. Hayes went to the wetland commission to get a permit to build this house, and the house that they proposed it has next to the wetlands, and it's not realistic to build a house close to the wetland, I mean, to the wetland line, because you, you know that everybody who, anybody who wants to buy that lot, they will, they want to have a backyard, at least like a reasonable backyard. And we didn't want them to build all these sheds or swimming pools or the backyard and the waters in the future. Actually, the wetland commission and myself, we recommended that if Mr. Hayes come to the zoning board of appeals because they have a hardship and apply for a variance, at least it will give the future owner of this property 15 feet more backyard for future use of the property. And their hardship is the, the lot is small, it is not 90,000 square feet, and it was created before the zoning regulations, which is grandfather. And if they meet all those 50-foot setbacks for three sides of the property, it's impossible to build a house without being into the wetlands. And the wetland commission kind of recommended that they come to the zoning board of appeals and ask for variance to stay from the wetlands a little further. And that is, I think, their hardship because of the wetlands and also the shape of the lot, and also the zoning regulations requirements of 50 feet setbacks from three sides of this property.
Now, is this well in septic, Musa?
Yes.
Yes, well in septic? And the health department, you said, has been out there?
They, they approved the location of the house, yes.
Okay. Very good. Okay, anybody from the board have any questions? Any more questions? The applicant?
No.
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Everybody all set? Okay, is there anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against the application? There are none? Do I have a motion or...
Just one second, Mark. Anybody from the public wants to participate?
Is there anyone there? Sorry, yeah, yeah, sorry, I had myself on mute. Uh, Mr. Chairman, there are, there is no indication of, of anybody in the public who wishes to speak.
Okay.
Is there anyone else to answer the questions of the applicant?
I'll say again.
Yes, is there anyone else to have any, any questions for the applicant?
No.
All set?
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Wait a minute, Marie's not seated, Marie.
Oh, okay, then I can't second.
Yeah, she's seated.
Oh, she is?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, you can make the second then.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, just so I can get up to speed here. I'm in. Ned Dalton's in. Vinnie's here. Gary Swingle's here, and now who is, who is Mary's being seated for?
For Roger Mitchell.
Roger Mitchell, okay. Got it. Alright, next application? Well, Guerrero would you as application, right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this application was withdrawn, and if you want, do you have the letter from the applicant?
Uh, let me see, I had, I had hard copies made.
Mr. Dalton, do you have it?
Do I have what?
Do you have an email from the applicant saying that he wants to...
I have it.
No, I do not.
Okay, please read that and then make a motion to accept and withdraw the application.
Okay, "To the ZBA, I am sending this email as a request to withdraw Guerrero Properties' application for a variance for two, at, for 226 Dalton Street, Oakville, Connecticut. The house is sold and is no longer owned by Guerrero Properties. Thank you, Robert Guerrero." Do I have a motion? Accept?
Motion to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next application is application number 2020-4 of Daniel De Simone for a variance of 30 feet to a front yard, front yard line setback for construction of a 30 by 24 detached garage to be located 20 feet from the front property line, street of unimproved road, Munson Road, at 68 Punches Road, Watertown, Connecticut, in an R70 residential zoning district. I'll have the secretary read the legal notice.
I think Secretary, that, Mr. Dalton doesn't have it, and I will read it for him.
Thank you.
Okay.
Application number 2020-4 of Daniel De Simone for a variance of 30 feet to a front property line setback for construction of a 30-foot by 24-foot detached garage to be located 20 feet from front property line or a street line of unimproved Munson Road at 68 Plunge Road, Watertown, Connecticut, in an R70 residential zoning district. Section 12.8 of the Watertown zoning regulations requires minimum 50 feet setback from front property line or an accessory building in an R70 residential zoning district. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. A copy of the application is on file in the planning and zoning office, Watertown Municipal Center, 61 Ecolake, Ecolake Road, Watertown, Connecticut. Dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this 14th day of May 2020. Dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this 21st day of May 2020. Edwin Dalton, Secretary, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone here? Oh, go ahead.
Use myself from this, as well, this applicant or application. He's a, a neighbor to our winery, so I don't want to have any influence over this decision.
Okay, uh, who is sitting for you, Vinnie?
I think Gary was sitting for me.
Gary, okay, Gary. Okay, is your, is there anyone here to represent the applicant?
Hello, this is Daniel De Simone. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Alright, good after, good afternoon, board. Name is Daniel De Simone, 68 Plunge Road in Watertown. Submitted an application to construct a 30 by 24 detached garage on the property. Spoke to Bob Smith at Torrington Health, he visited the property and approved the site location. Signage was put up 45 days prior to the meeting. Certified mailings and return receipt are available. I sent zoning office also a certified A2 survey map, just to show the layout of the location. And the hardship is the physical shape and topographical condition of the property would bring financial hardship, if not granted. Ultimately, what I want to do is center the swing set and the kids' yard and move everything over to the left-hand side away from, I want the kids away from Munson Road and construct a detached garage off the driveway. But because there's the unimproved Munson Road, I need a variance of 30 feet just to construct that garage and kind of move things around. I spoke to Musa several times, we tried to move around the garage, but really, this is the only location that I can construct this garage.
Well, first off, monetary cannot be a hardship, so you have to strike that from the record. But Musa, you went out and looked at this, so what, what's the deal over there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm familiar with this property because I issued the permit when they built the house on this lot. This is a corner lot, like has frontage on Munson Road and also on Plunge Road. Their drive is off of Plunge Road, which is an improved road. Munson Road is not improved, it's a dirt road, and there is not that much traffic there. These corner lots really sometimes create hardship for the owners because it requires 50 feet from both streets. And they have a septic system and also they're well behind this location. If they move the garage further from the property line, then it will be on their leaching fields and close to the well. And Torrington area held the sick, look at this location, and they said, this is the most reasonable location to put this garage. And their hardship is the two frontage, the shape of the lot, and also the location of the septic system, that they cannot move the garage further away from the road.
Okay.
It couldn't go back farther where that square shed is?
No.
They removed the shed.
Is it a garage for cars or is it a big shed?
It's a big shed to put a lawnmower and the kids' toys in. Yeah, it's not going to be any kind of garage of, you know, mechanics, just to put lawn equipment and kids' power wheels. It's just outgrowing, so.
Do you have a garage right now with your house?
I do, yes.
What is it, a two-car garage?
Uh, it's currently a three-car garage, correct?
Three-car garage, and you're going to add a 20 by what?
24 by 30.
24 by 30.
That's another three-car, two, good-sized two-car garage.
Pretty big shed.
It's a garage.
Right, like the picture.
Yeah, I submitted a picture, there's no, I mean, it's an oversized two-car.
Yeah.
24 by 30.
Bob Smith was okay with it being that close to the well?
Yeah, he was fine, he approved it, he came out himself, visited me, and, and, you know, it's basically on the same page to say this is kind of the only place on your property that would make sense, or that would actually work.
Right.
And Musa, you took a look at this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've been there, and Bob Smith approved it, and he said that this is the, the best location for this garage because of the septic system.
Well, septic's in the front, but...
Yeah, septic in the...
It would, the variance, if this wasn't a...
Well, so let me just put this somewhere, it's, so, that, I can't center in the yard
for the fact that, yeah, it just doesn't make sense. I'm not going to look behind my house and look at it in a garage, and quite frankly, I want everything on the left-hand side of the house because Munson Road is a dangerous road, whether you guys realize it or not, it's pretty dangerous with dirt bikes and quads ripping up and down all day long. So I have a one-year-old and three-year-old, and I want all the traffic to stay on the driveway side and on Munson Road and have my kids in center of the yard. And to put it in the center of the yard would be ridiculous.
Now, what's the setback if, Musa, what's the setback if it wasn't a side property, if it wasn't a frontage on the side property?
At 25 feet.
So it'd be half of what, realistically, it's, the variance would be half because it's...
If it was a side property line, they needed only 25 feet. Now, because it has a second frontage, and they have 50.
The other issue would be is, if you move the garage, you'd still have the well casing sticking up, so you'd have to somehow maneuver around the well casing and...
Right, that's no good.
That creates another hazard, so...
Right, that's, that's why I asked, if it was a shed or a garage.
How many feet is this garage from the well?
Uh, it's about six feet. Three to six, depending. Yep.
It's cold.
But, but if, but if the, if Mr. Smith approved it, it, you know...
So he must be alright.
He gotta be alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, he saw the drawings, exactly what I submitted to you guys is exactly what I showed him, and he was perfectly fine with it. So there's access, so the other thing is, there is access for them to, to go around if they ever needed to, a drill again or, or fix anything in the well. And he was comfortable with that.
Bob Smith from Torrington area held a strict, put a condition that no drains within 25 feet of the existing well. I mean, they, they cannot put footing drains around this garage.
That's what I was, I was looking for, that was my next question.
Yeah, so, yeah, exactly, so 100%, so what he said is, if you're going to put drains, you gotta make sure that you're at least 25 feet away from that. So I gotta make sure that it's pitching away from any, any hazard.
Well, it's going to be a slab on grade anyway, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Um, does anybody else have any questions? Guys all set?
No questions.
Okay, anyone from the public wish to speak for or against? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak for or against? Anyone from the public who wishes to speak for or against? And while I'm asking that, is there anyone out there? Mark, you had mentioned there's no one out there? Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do not see anybody who is looking to participate in this public hearing. Okay. Alright, do I have a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Alright, and, well, the next one. Application number 2020-5 of Ian Herpack for a variance of 25 feet to a front yard property line setback for interior lots for construction of a 30 by 50 barn to be located 50 feet from front yard, from front property line at 173 Chimney Road, Watertown, Connecticut, in an R90 residential zoning district. I have the secretary read the legal notice, or Musa, you want to read it?
Yes, Town of Watertown Zoning Board of Appeals Legal Notice. The zoning board of appeals of the town of Watertown, Connecticut, will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 24, 2020, at 7:00 PM as a web-based meeting to hear and act upon the following applications. Application number 2020-5 of Ian Herpack for a variance of 25 feet to front yard property line setback for interior lots for construction of a 30-feet by 50-feet barn to be located 50 feet from front property line at 173 Chimney Road, Watertown, Connecticut, and an R90 residential zoning district. Section 6.3.1, or 16, parentheses, A of the Watertown zoning regulations requires minimum 75 feet setback from front property line for any structure on an interior lot and an R90 residential zoning district. At this hearing, interested persons in written communications will be heard. A copy of the application is on file in the planning and zoning office, Watertown Municipal Center, 61 Ecolake Road, Watertown, Connecticut. Dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this 11th day of June 2020. Dated in Watertown, Connecticut, this 18th day of June 2020. Edwin Dalton, Secretary, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Uh, is there someone there to represent the applicant?
Uh, yes, can you guys see me or only hear me?
I can only hear you, I don't know if the rest of you can...
I can only hear you.
I can only hear you, but that's okay.
Alright, how about now?
I can hear you, I don't see you.
Perfect, so, I'm Ian Rypack, 173 Chimney Road. There was a little typo in that, the, the building I'm looking to put up, the barn, is only 42 by 30, not 30 by 50. I'm looking to move back toward the front property line by 25 feet to make it a 50-foot setback. Because I want to be able to back a trailer into this barn if I have to, I want to be able to store my camper in there over the winter, and if I move the building any closer to my driveway, I would have to move my driveway over more in front of my house, which would be right over my septic fields.
The map shows 30 by 50. Is that changed?
The, um...
They call it 30 by 42.
Yeah, the, the scaled prints do show a 30 by 50, but it, I downsized the size of the building, I don't need a, I don't need it that big.
Okay.
And again, what was your hardship?
It might, it would push my dr... It might, it would push my driveway by moving the building over to a seventy-five foot setback. It would have to push my driveway over on top of my septic system.
The map doesn't show where your septic system actually is.
The septic tank is off the side of the house and the trenches are directly in front of the house to the left of the driveway. So there should be multiple.
Yeah, if you look at, if you look at like page twenty-three, it shows his, uh, hand-drawn, shows the driveway in front of the garage. And then the septic field's right in front of the house. It's hand-drawn.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is page nineteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, nineteen. Yep.
Uh, got it now. Okay.
The, the leaching fields are on the left side of the driveway.
Yes.
And if Mr. Herpack bring the garage twenty-five feet closer to the driveway, then he has to move his driveway toward the leaching fields. And also one other thing that this is an interior lot, you know that in, for interior lots. Instead of fifty-foot front setback, they require seventy-five feet. Fifty percent more setbacks compared to a regular lot. This was on a, a, a street lot. They needed only fifty feet. Because it's a interior lot, they need seventy-five feet front setback.
You think maybe we should go look at this?
Yeah.
What do you guys think?
Sure. Make a sidewalk.
Chimney Road, Chimney Road is a little tricky as it is over in that area, those lots.
There's, because it's interior like that, the house in front of it does have quite a bit of space. So it's not like it's gonna be right in their backyard, but.
Yeah.
That's why they put that seventy-five foot.
Probably should go look at this.
There is a significant amount of woods between me and their, their property too, so.
What do you guys think? Let's go for a walk.
Do you wanna do it before the, the meeting?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, it actually could be anytime, right? Cause we're not gonna meet in person the next meeting, right, Moose?
Yes.
So, so we, so we kinda have to go and then get back to our homes to.
Back to our houses, yeah.
You wanna do it on a Saturday, the Saturday before the meeting?
Oh, I mean, we could do it. How, how do you got, we could do it before the seven. We think we could like meet there at five or six o'clock.
Five o'clock will be good.
Is that all right with you guys? Five o'clock?
Sure, whatever, whatever is fine with me, yes.
As long as you wear a mask.
Oh, yeah, you gotta wear a mask. Well, yeah. Okay, so Moose, you wanna set that up for, uh?
Yes, you need a motion to have a sidewalk on July twenty-second at five P M.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we have a sidewalk at, uh, on the, uh, twenty-second of July at five P M. At one seventy-three Chimney Road.
You're a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, that's a Wednesday.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, after the next.
And no, anybody from the public?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this application? Hearing none. Do I, uh, I need, uh, we are, we need a motion to table it and. For a sidewalk.
Continue the public hearing.
I'm, I make a motion, we table and continue the public hearing.
You're a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next application.
Are we sure there's no one that wants to speak?
I already said three times.
Yeah, it takes a minute with this.
There is, there is nobody, there is nobody wants to speak.
Yeah.
It takes time on this computer to do it. It's not immediate.
Sorry, fellas. Okay, application number twenty twenty-six of Insure Rezavi, Rezavini. For a variance of twelve feet to a side, side property line setback for construction of a fourteen by ten deck to be located at eight feet. From a side property line at three sixty-eight Mount Fair Drive, Watertown, Connecticut, and an R thirty residential zoning district. Moose, read the legal notice.
Town of Watertown Zoning Board of Appeals Legal Notice. Application number twenty twenty-six of Mansour Rezavini for a variance of twelve feet to side yard property line setback. For construction of a fourteen-foot by nineteen-foot deck to be located eight feet from a side property line. At three sixty-eight Mount Fair Drive, Watertown, Connecticut, and an R thirty residential zoning district. Action twelve point eight of the Watertown zoning regulations requires minimum twenty feet setback. From side property line for a principal building in an R thirty residential zoning district. At this hearing, interested persons in written communications will be heard. A copy of the application is on file in the Planning and Zoning Office, Watertown Municipal Center, sixty-one Ecolake Road, Watertown, Connecticut. Dated in Watertown, Connecticut this eleventh day of June twenty twenty. Dated in Watertown, Connecticut this eighteenth day of June twenty twenty at Wondalton Secretary's Zoning Board of Appeals.
Uh, is there someone there to represent the applicant? Hello?
We can't hear you.
Can't hear me?
No, I hear you. We can't hear.
We can't hear the applicant.
You, you should have a little microphone looking thing.
Now, I was, uh, you guys just unmuted me. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Now we can hear you now.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, my name is Mohammed Rezavani, three sixty-eight Mount Fair Drive. Uh, my father is sitting right next to me. His name is Mensur Rezavani. Um, the same address. I'm here to translate for him if that is all right.
Sure.
Um.
You're gonna represent him?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
I'm to translate for him. Um, apologize for my parents. Uh, I literally just had shoulder surgery this morning. Um, but we are applying for a hardship, uh, variance. Uh, our house does not have a deck on the back where the two doors are. Uh, my dad purchased the house and, uh, the people who had it before never finished it. The house was foreclosed. So, uh, is definitely our hardship, so it is definitely a hardship for, uh, safety reasons. Uh, we have it bolted lock, but there's kids in the house. Also, the bedrooms are on the top floor of the house. There is, God forbid, an emergency or a fire. There is no secondary exit. And my old man just had his total knee replacement done and his bedroom's on that floor. But that's the only place he can really go outside and sit to get some sun if we, you know, we get this deck approved.
So, so right now, your only means of egress is your front door?
Yes, and there's one, um, our house is a split level, four levels, and the bottom level. Um, out of the basement, there is one door there.
You kinda really need a deck. You got it all.
I, I, I guess I have a question for Moose. The, the, the deck appears to be on the backside of the house, although the applicant is looking for a side yard variance. Should it, shouldn't it be a rear yard variance?
No, this is a corner lot. They can pick and choose which one is the side, which one is the rear. And when they built the house, they treated this as a side property line and the other side is the rear property line. If you look at the map. That they submitted, you can see that.
Mr. Stevens is, I believe, the side property.
You know, it's too bad. I don't really see where this door is.
Um, I.
The pictures?
Yeah, I'm looking at the pictures.
If you're on page, if you go to page ten, you'll see two lower windows and then the door is above one of the windows.
Yes, and that's on the side of East Street.
Okay, yep, gotcha.
You plan to have stairs leading from the deck to the ground?
Um, if, if, uh, the, if they need to be for the permit, yes.
Well, it, it will.
I haven't gotten to the building, uh, inspector yet. I don't know what exactly they want us to do. How to put, you know, which way to shoot the stairs off if they're needed.
Well, that's my, that's the.
I, I want, we, we want.
There's go towards the.
Well, you had, you had, you had just mentioned that you wanted to use this as a means of egress. So you're gonna need stairs.
We haven't gotten that far to ask the, the inspector if he wants to. Oh, we want it. We just.
You want stairs?
Oh, of course.
Okay, so you have to say that.
Oh, I, I, it's my first time doing this. I just didn't know if, uh, the, the bill inspector wanted him to go to the right side or the left side.
That'll, that might change our whole, uh, opinion on this deck.
Okay, alright.
If you're gonna use it as a means to get out of the house for safety, that's one thing and that, and that could be part of your hardship.
Yeah, well, definitely.
Use the deck for sunbathing, that's a whole different animal.
No, 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 no. We definitely, uh, want the stairs.
But you wanna make sure that the stairs don't bring you any closer to the property line.
Right.
Than, than the deck.
Yes.
Right.
That's the point I was trying to.
Yeah, like I said, I just didn't know what, how, which way he wants me to shoot the stairs out.
Well, I don't know if you're gonna block, if your stairs come to the side, I'm not sure you can block the window.
Well, the, the deck, the deck will probably, may have to go over that window a little bit more, just.
Yeah. Well, the stairs could be ten feet out at the outside end of the deck and continue down towards the middle of the house.
Yes, that's what we were planning on.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as the stairs are not toward the property line, it's on the other side of the deck. It shouldn't be a problem.
What's the elevation from the ground to that door, doorway, you know?
Um, I would, I, I would say probably closer to. Closer to twelve feet.
Boy.
I can go out and measure it if you want to give me.
No, just.
It's on the second floor.
Always put, uh, you wait to have room to put a landing and then a set of stairs coming down to the landing.
Okay.
There'd be enough room for a landing.
There's twenty, there's twenty-six clawboards. They look like they're six-inch. So it's probably twelve feet, like you said.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Twelve feet.
And, and it's, um. On this sheet, it says fourteen by ten. It's actually fourteen by nineteen. Moose read it off as, as fourteen by nineteen as well. Okay.
Right, he read it. I'll be, we give him a twenty-foot run for steps.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's.
So you probably have to have a landing.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know if you can see on, on my phone. Probably not.
That's what I'm saying. He's gonna need a landing.
Yeah.
Whatever, that's his issue, his problem as long.
If you, if you grant the variance, uh, he cannot get closer to the property line than eight feet. That corner of the deck will be eight feet from the property line and that's it. When he cannot put the, the stairs on that side of the deck. It has to be on the other side.
Correct.
Have to go alongside the house.
Yes.
Okay. You guys got any other?
If we approve this, it'd have to be a stipulation that it can't go out the back.
No, you, the, the variance that you give is that this is located eight feet from the property line and that's it.
Yeah.
And it has to have stairs.
I'm sorry?
I said it, it has, it has to have stairs because it doesn't show anything here. It's a little drawing, doesn't show anything but a block.
Did you see the pictures?
The thing of it is, are the stairs getting, are the stairs getting increased, uh, is varying, you know?
No.
Gonna protrude into the varies?
No.
It's not.
Oh, okay, so he's all right. Okay, guys, got any other questions? Any questions? Hear me okay? Everybody all set? Okay. Is there anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
There, there, there is no one who wishes to speak from the public.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, so we're gonna go right into the meeting? Other meeting?
Yes, item five, action on minutes.
Right, I got it. Okay, action on minutes.
Thank you, guys.
I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
We approve. Go ahead.
Motion, uh, I'm, make a motion, we approve the, uh, meeting notes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, old business, review of zoning board appeals bylaws. I don't think we wanna do that tonight, right?
No, motion to table.
Did, did you get a chance to review them?
Well, sorta.
Okay, if you wanna table it, you can table it.
Yeah, we'll table it. I think we should. I mean, it's better if we're in person. What do you think, Jeff?
Yeah, motion to table.
Yeah. Okay, you made a motion to table. Is there a second?
Did.
There a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, new business, application twenty twenty-two of Alan Hayes for a variance of fifteen feet for a front. Property line setback for construction of a new single-family dwelling to be located thirty-five feet from the property line. Street line at six oh three Osage, Osage Drive, Watertown, Connecticut, and an R thirty residential zoning district. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a correction here. There is a typo. It, instead of six oh three Osage Drive, it should be Lot Four Litchfield Road, Watertown, and an R ninety zoning district. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
And also, uh, Gary has to sit in for me, I must remember.
Hey, Gary, you're there? Gary? Gary, are you still there? Hello? I don't think Gary's there.
Oh, we hear you.
Is, he's not muted?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Gary.
Now we hear you.
Okay, I make a motion to approve.
You're gonna, you're gonna, uh, be sitting in for Vinnie?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I make a motion to approve application.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Hey, uh, any discuss, well, we're discussing, I guess, um, he had the health department out there and I guess being a corner lot. Uh, Moose checked it out too, that his, asked if his hardship is being, as the way to, yeah, the total of his lot is, so. He has really no other place to put this, this house. So, um, there's a motion on the floor, a second. All in favor? Does anybody have anything they wanted?
It also move, it also moves the, uh, the building away from the wetlands and, uh.
Right, true.
Gives, gives us some relief on wetlands.
True.
Yeah, this lot has very limited buildable area. The majority of the lot is really wetland. And that is why the Watson Commission wanted him to come to you to get a variance in order to keep the house further away from the wetlands.
Beautiful. Okay, so I have a motion on, a motion to approve, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, application twenty twenty-four of Daniel De Simone. For a variance of thirty feet to a front yard property line. for a variance of thirty feet to a front yard property line setback for construction of a thirty by twenty-four detached garage to be located twenty feet from a front property line, street line of unimproved Munson Road at sixty-eight Punjes Road, Watertown, Connecticut, and an R seventy residential zoning district. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Rick, uh, Gary has to vote for me in this instance as well.
Okay, Vinnie recused himself from this application. Awesome. Uh, Mr. G and L is uh this it, this application out. Okay, I have a motion. I have a motion on the floor to approve. Is there a motion made?
Yes, I made a motion, Jeff.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Hey, any discussion?
It's a, it's a corner lot, so so we, the applicant was struggling with two frontage uh setbacks and uh with the location of a septic system as well as as well. Uh, a different department, it was determined to be the best location, so it 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 makes the most sense.
Okay, anybody else have anything to add?
No.
Hearing none, a motion to approve, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, application number twenty twenty dash five of Ian Harripack for a variance of twenty-five feet to a front yard property line setback for interior lots for construction of a thirty by fifty barn to be located fifty feet from a front property line at one seventy five, one seventy-three Chimney Road, Watertown, Connecticut, and an R ninety residential zone. And that uh motion table for a sidewalk.
So moved.
Motion to table.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, application number twenty twenty dash six of Mensur Rezavini for a variance of twelve feet to a side property line setback for construction of a fourteen by ten deck to be located eight feet from a side property line at three sixty-eight Mount Fair Drive, Watertown, Connecticut, and an R thirty residential zoning district. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
For a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, uh, I guess his hardship is to be able to get out of this house and uh it actually would be another means of egress for them to get out of, get out of the house. They have a door there which um I guess isn't safe without a deck, so um that's his hardship. So there's a motion on the floor to approve, a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, communications and bills. Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies letter concerning the cancellation of the annual conference.
And you wanted, and then the other. Meeting, they canceled it unfortunately.
Right, and then the second one was the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies quarterly newsletter, spring twenty twenty, volume twenty uh five, twenty-four, issue two. So do I have a motion to, take a motion to uh either.
Accept and file.
Accept and approve. A motion to accept?
Motion to accept and file.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Hey, reports from commission, reports from committees, none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That didn't go too bad.
Not not bad for a first meeting.
No. Well, a couple of.
Easy for you to say, Mr. Chairman.
Well.
You gotta get over the hurdles. It takes, it takes a while to get them started, but once you get going, it's not too bad.
I never did this before. Thanks to my girlfriend, she set me all up. Well, she was an IBMer, so. Kinda easy for her. And then you got Vinnie, another computer expert there.
Yeah, we have problems too.
I think it's a problem.
It's all Mark's fault, so.
Sorry, I did it the easy way.
Vermont.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
So we're all sat now?
We're all sat.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.